Okay, go with the roll. Paul.
Kevin Ryan.
Here.
Michael Scott.
Here.
Peter Hansel. Jamie Gerardi. The rest of you guys?
Here.
Chris Holgins. Uh, Turner 12th grade.
Here.
You have proof of publication?
The items are published in the sample base times on newspapers, 2019 and July 26th, 2019.
Okay, I don't believe there are any minutes to be approved. So, um, for those of you who may get up and speak today, if you want to stand, raise your right hand and be sworn.
Do you swear or affirm that this is the only possibility of approval yet?
Aye, aye, aye.
Alright, thank you. So, welcome today with the Planning Commission, who are appointed by the County Commissioners. We meet twice monthly. We serve as a local planning agency and hold public hearings and transmit to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code, amendments, rezonings, and conditional use requests. Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. Our final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. Anyone who is in opposition to any development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission transmits a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it's important for you to attend the appropriate Board of County Commission meeting. For those of you who are not familiar with the format of our meetings, I'll go over it very quickly. We have continuances, and that occurs when the applicant or the staff has requested that we continue, uh, the application for any number of reasons. It's been our tradition to approve those continuances unless there are extreme circumstances. Then we have a consent agenda, and on that agenda are items where we have not received, uh, letters of objection from the public or the staff. Uh, we go over those item by item. If there's something on consent agenda that you'd like to have heard today, uh, raise your hand when I, uh, when I read it off, and I will have it pulled from consent. Otherwise, it will remain on consent, and we'll vote on all of those items at one time. Then we have the regular items that, uh, were not on consent. Those are items that we'll hear, uh, you know, following the consent agenda. Applicants will have three minutes to make their presentations. Respondents will have three minutes to ask their questions, and then the applicant will have time to, uh, respond to those objections. If you wanted extra time, uh, there's a method to do that. We have to submit a request in writing at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, and as far as I know, we have not received any such requests. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So, uh, if you have a phone with you, this is a good time to silence it. Probably check my, uh, just to make sure. And, um, so before we start the regular meeting, we have, uh, an opportunity for those who want to, uh, ask questions or make a public comment on a topic that is not on our agenda. Is there anybody here for that purpose? Okay? You know what? So, Denise, if you want to begin?
Good afternoon, Planning Commission members. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. Uh, right now, we're going to move to item P-11. Uh, this is going to be a continuance item. P-11 is PDD-19 CU-40. It's conditional use request in the name of Arthur J. and Dory D. Visi for a private ski shooting range in an AC district. Planning and Development Department is requesting a continuance to the September 5th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Dade City on this item.
Okay, so we have a request by the staff to, uh, continue P-11 to the next meeting in Dade City, which is?
September 5th.
September the 5th.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Since this matter was not listed on the agenda for continuance, I think you just need to make sure there's nobody here to speak to the issue.
Okay. So, is there anyone here that would like to speak to the issue, uh, P-11? See no one?
Probably could take a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second to approve the continuance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unless she carries.
Following item is P-1, PDD-19, 7427, and then it's a special exception request in the name of Kevin Seagriff. This is for a vehicle repair shop and, um, repair storage, vehicle storage facility in a C-1 neighborhood commercial district. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as stated in your packet.
Okay, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? No objections, okay?
Item PC-2 will be pulled from the consent agenda.
Okay, mark that.
Following item is PC-3, which is PDD-19, 7421, in the name of Boyett Oaks, Phase 2 MPUD Master Planned Unit Development District, JLP Properties, uh, Property Investments, LLP, for a rezoning from an MPUD Master Planned Unit Development District to allow 222 single-family detached dwellings on approximately 24.08 acres. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your packet.
Alright, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? See no objections?
Item PC-4 is PDD-19, 7419, in the name of Gulf Coast Estates LLC. This is for a change in zoning from a C-2 general commercial district to a C-3 commercial light manufacturing district with recording of deed restrictions prohibiting, prohibiting certain uses on the property. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with, approval rather, um, sorry.
Okay. So, is the applicant present? For PC-4. Applicant? Okay. Anybody here to object? Alright, see no objections?
Item PC-5 is PDD-19, 7424, in the name of Joshua LLC. It's for a change in zoning from an AC agricultural district to a C-2 general commercial district with a recorded deed restriction, uh, just stating that this would be for only, um, a contractor's office and warehouse on the property for a sprinkler contractor, and this comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
Okay, so PC-5, is the applicant present?
Yes.
I heard a yes, but I didn't see it.
Yes.
Oh, okay. And you're agreeing with the conditions? Alright, anybody here to object? Okay, no objections?
Item PC-6 is being polled.
Okay.
PC-7 is PDD-19, 7426, in the name of Edward P. Carlander, for a change in zoning from an AR agricultural residential to an MF1 multiple-family medium-density district. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with a correction to finding effect number 10, as was, uh, I presented that to the clerk's office as well, which reads, "Unless an alternative standard is approved for paying a proportionate share cost in lieu of improving Darlington Road to County standards, the applicant will be responsible for improving Darlington Road to County standards."
Alright, PC-7, is the applicant present? Okay, anyone here to object? Alright, you'd like to have it polled? You'd like to, you'd like to have it polled? Okay.
Following item is PC-8, PDD-19-CU-46, in the name of Pascal Ranch. Bonefish Grill is for the sale of alcoholic beverages, beer, wine, and liquor on premises consumption in conjunction with the operation of a restaurant with outside seating and service of alcoholic beverages on a patio in a master planned unit development district. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions.
Any applicant?
Yes.
I didn't see you, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, is anyone here to object? Okay, no objections?
Item PC-9 is PDD-19 CU-47, in the name of Pascal Ranch, Inc., Carrabba's Italian Grill, for the sale of alcoholic beverages, beer, wine, and liquor on premises consumption in conjunction with the operation of a restaurant with outside seating and service of alcoholic beverages on a patio in a master planned unit development district. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions.
Alright, applicant present?
Yes.
Anyone here to object to that? See no objections?
PC-10 is PDD-19 CU-48, in the name of Pascal Ranch, Inc., Aussie Grill, for the sale of alcoholic beverages, beer, wine, and liquor on premises consumption in conjunction with the operation of a restaurant with outside seating and service of alcoholic beverages on a patio in a master planned unit development district. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions.
Applicant present?
Yes, last night.
Busy man.
And that's the end of your consent agenda.
Alright, anybody here to object? Okay, I see no objections. Okay, so we're being asked to approve, um, PC-1, PC-3, PC-4, PC-5, PC-8, PC-9, PC-10.
Correct.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Second.
A motion and a second? Further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Good afternoon, Amy Hyler, Planning and Development. Item PC-2 is going to be, uh, PDD-19-0920. It's a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment in the name of CPAL 1905 Aiken Mixed Use. Uh, the subject property is located in the South Market area on the north side of State Road 54, approximately 1,400 square feet west of Cypress Creek Road. The subject property is, uh, or the applicant is proposing a large-scale amendment from Res-3, residential three dwelling units per gross acre to PD Plan Development to allow for a mix of uses, uh, to include multifamily residential and commercial. What you see here is the proposed inset for the, uh, future land use to PD, and the comprehensive plan consistency that we did the analysis for is consistent with the following policies. And with that, we recommend the local planning agency find the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Any applicant, please?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners Clark Hobby, Hobby and Hobby PA 109 North Breast Street, Tampa, Florida, have been sworn. As staff noted, this site, uh, is located in the urban service area, in the South Market area, in particular, in the heavily growing State Road 54 corridor. It already has Res-3 zoning, uh, but as a county, we've made a decision to ask for increased density and intensity along the 54, 56 corridor within the South Market area because we've already provided the services to serve those, and it's the most efficient way of providing goods and services to people in higher-density areas there. Uh, what we're proposing today and what's before you, we're a little bit out of step on this one, and please forgive me. Normally, when you all see a PD land use amendment, you have the MPUD with it. There was an issue with staff about which was being noticed for which date, and so you will see the MPUD before you in a month, on the 5th of, of September. So, all you're seeing today, and you're acting as the LPA, uh, for, is concerning our change to PD, and all we're proposing here is a mixed-use project that will allow up to 280 units and 49 and a half thousand square feet of commercial and office. And I think you all are very familiar with the State Road 54 corridor. This is located at the signalized intersection of 54 and Oak Grove. There's massive retail and multifamily development all around the area, so I think what the subarea proposes, uh, is very consistent with what the county's vision for the area is. We've been working with staff extensively on a variety of things that are more detailed that are in the MPUD, and which we can, uh, address next month, but I don't think there's any question that adding additional density and intensity on this site as, at a signalized arterial intersection on 54 is anything but good planning. So, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know we have one neighbor we've been, uh, discussing some, uh, access issues with and will be working with, um, but I'm happy to answer any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hobby. Any questions from here? No, okay. Alright, uh, so, I think, you raise your hand, you'd like to come speak?
Yeah. By way of brief introduction, I live 500 feet from the northwest corner of the Aiken Trust lot. Originally, we thought we were going to be looking at four or five-story apartment buildings peering over into our residence backyard.
Sir, we need your name for the record, name and address for the record. Thank you.
John Pavka, P-A-V-K-A, 2133 Boggy Ridge Parkway. And as I said earlier, that's about 500 feet from the northwest corner of the Aiken Trust land. You, when you move into a place, as I did 21 years ago, you worry about the neighbors. Well, this neighbor, Aiken Trust, in 2012, sent us a certified return receipt requested letter through our property manager about they had their forest vandalized. I kid you not. They wanted us to publish on our website about vandals, not trespassing. There were threats in there about they authorized hunters on the land. This is a 27-acre plot. The threat didn't hold water. When they sent the second letter in January of 2014, I got agitated. I was all set to send a response. My board of directors talked me out of it. Quite frankly, bad neighbors don't make good neighbors, and that's why I'm rising in opposition to what they're proposing, because when I went online to look for this thing two weeks ago, all I found was the preapproval meeting, not open to the public. I'm public. So, I'm asking you, as the zoning commissioners, to extend this thing out so that my board of directors can get behind this and give you guys a response while we don't like it. That's all I got to say.
Alright, thank you.
Andy Joe Scaglioni, 3802 Ehrlich Road. Good afternoon. I, um, for over 20 years have owned the property, uh, to the west of this. Uh, there's eight acres of C-2 property. I plan to do a quality development there. I have no intention of selling, so I'm very protective of what goes on here. Um, I want quality, and, um, we're, um, actually having constructive conversations as of today with the developer regarding the assets, um, that, that would go into my property. So, at this point, not opposing, not supporting, withholding until September 5th, and, uh, just want to thank you for volunteering your time, being away from your family and business. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, was there someone else? The lady in the dark dress?
I was just here to Darlington Center.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Mr. Chairman, Clark Hobby again. Um, I, there's really nothing for there to me, for me to rebut, but I will say, for the benefit of the Planning Commission, I will reach out to the gentleman who spoke, Mr. Cop, I believe it was, and we met with their association once already. We'll meet with them again and make sure we're all speaking the same language on where we're heading on this. Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Hobby, when did you guys, uh, reach out, and when did you notify them?
I think it was about, well, we, the official notice was sent maybe four, six weeks ago, but we met with their association maybe six months ago. It's been quite a while.
Okay.
We met with them early on. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll move for approval.
I second.
Have a motion and a second? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Just trying to tee up PC-6. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. PC-6 is PDD-19, 7425, in the name of Massey Partners Limited. It's located in north-central Pasco County on the northwest corner of Trilby Road and Dowling Lake Road. The, uh, current zoning is AC Agricultural District, which is, um, 10-acre minimum lot sizes. The applicant is proposing AR-5, which is five-acre minimum lot sizes for site-built homes only. The, um, surrounding area is rural-density residential development on lots that are between 10, I mean, three acres and over 10 acres, and there are agricultural pursuits in the area. As you can see, the surrounding zoning, to the west, you've got Hernando County, and we did send out a notice to Hernando County for comments. We did not get any comments from Hernando County. So, to the north, you have AC Agricultural District. To the south, you've got AC, and you've also got AR Agricultural Residential. To the east, you've got AC Agricultural District. Surrounding future land use is age, the current, uh, location is AGR, which is five-acre minimum lots, one dwelling per five acres. Uh, then, to the north, you've got AG, which is 10-acre lot areas, South AG and East AG. Sorry, that's the, the wrong slide, the correct slide as far as the aerial, but the wrong access. So, the access is from Trilby Road, Dowling Lake Road, and, um... There's a third road, I apologize. Eastern Road. Thank you. And this comes to you with a recommendation of approval. I know there's some folks here who, um, have some concerns and some comments on the item.
Commissioners, again, Clark Hobby, represent the applicant Massey Partners Limited, which is comprised of the Pittman and Massey families from Dade City here, who've owned this property since, I believe, around 1937. They've owned the property in various agricultural states. Uh, it was a grow for many, many years, went through three freezes, planted pine trees, the pine trees is, uh, pine trees became diseased, and so the family is looking to do something else with the property other than the agricultural, which doesn't really seem a feasible and economic alternative at this point. After owning it for that period of time, obviously, the family, uh, loves the area and, and would prefer to have a viable economic use in agriculture, but I think most people realize that's just not there anymore. I am curious to see what the neighbors have to say, and would love to chat with them, but there are three land, future land use classifications and densities that are presumed to be low-density in the comp plan, Res-1, AGR, which this is, and AG. And we were AG, as of the 2007 adoption of the comp plan, did a plan amendment to AGR without any objection to get to the density that's permitted by this rezoning, and all we're trying to do is get five-acre lots here to match our comp plan. It's the second lowest density in the entirety of the county. We're not going to do anything that requires anything other than well and septic. The density is higher than some areas of northeast Pasco, so, and we have extensive frontage on a collector road, so I'm not really sure what the objections might be, but I'm here to listen. With that, I'll reserve the balance of my time.
Okay, thank you. Alright, who would like to come up and speak? There you are, I watched the...
Well, Denise is putting on my graphic. Um, I'll introduce myself, Art Woodworth, 34125 Alona Court, Dade City, Florida. I live on, uh, the south side of Lake Dowling. I live on a 10-acre track. I actually developed the subdivision I live in, which was almost 100 acres, and they're all 10-acre tracks or greater. This is going to be helpful to me. Pause it.
No problem, Art.
Well, not to protract this, I can go ahead. When she puts up the graphic, you're going to see that all the surrounding land use in Pasco County, their west boundaries with Hernando County, all the land use is AG, um, 1 to 10. Uh, this track, I guess, had a land use amendment some time ago. I know it had a conservation subdivision approved some time ago. There it is. But, here's my biggest concern, and what you see outlined in red is where I live. And there's a lake, uh, in between us. If you take a look at Trilby Road, uh, Trilby Road may be a collector road, but Trilby Road is relatively narrow. Trilby Road has a lot of hills, which create sight distance issues. In other words, when you approach the hill, when you're going up the hill, you have no idea what's coming up the other side. There's no, there's very, very little sight distance. The sight distance is, is even worse around those two reverse curves you see right there. You cannot see around them. The speed limit on Trilby Road is 45 miles an hour, posted. Those corners, I have advisory signs, um, that I think are 20 miles per hour. Fact of the matter is, everybody does well in excess of 50 miles an hour. It creates a very dangerous situation. There's blind driveways on those curves. Those curves have hills, one up, one down, depending on which way you're going. Can't see around them. And on the weekends, we get a lot of bicycle traffic, which is consistent with the San Antonio area. We get a lot of motorcycle clubs up there, not gangs, clubs. And it, it just doesn't need more traffic on it. I see no reason why we should add, if we double the land use, or double the zoning on this property, we're now going to go from, let's say, 32, 33 lots to 16 lots. So, that's 160 trips a day that we're going to add to a road that has navigational issues. And I would respectfully request that you leave it as 1 to 10. Uh, it would be consistent with the surrounding land use, and there's no reason why it can't be viable. Thank you.
Thank you, Art.
Can I ask Mr. Woodworth a question?
Yes, Art. We have a question from David.
So, there's a finding in our agenda memo, it's in finding 12, it says, "The applicant will be responsible for improving Trilby Road to County standards." So, does that address your concern?
David, I can't imagine that the applicant from that subdivision, even if it's 32 or 33 lots, is going to have the funds to improve Trilby Road to the extent that it can remove the hills, create better sight distance, or straighten out those curves. It ain't possible. I mean, we have, at some point in this planning process, we have to use some common sense, and common sense is that you shouldn't add more trips to Trilby Road.
I'm just going by what it says, so...
I know what, I, I know what it says. Okay.
Yes, sir? Can you read that mic?
Uh, I can stay in the mic.
Oh, okay.
Uh, yeah, I need to play it. George L. Peterson.
You're going to have to speak into that mic there.
George L. Peterson. 34302 Dowling Lake Road. Gentlemen, the last two, three years, I, um, been in contact with a Mr. Drew Pittman. Drew Pittman is a relative of the Masseys, great lady. I don't know if you ever knew her, but Sally Matthew was a wonderful woman. Back when I bought my property there on Dowling Lake, it was 1979. Dowling Lake had a rope road all the way back. Drew here, Drew came in and, uh, chose to go ahead and move that road, paying off some of the people there by putting up fencing and other things to get them to sign over the access to Dowling Lake Road being changed for his benefit. In other words, the, the, everything was there, um... When I looked at this property, the property man that first owned that, a guy named Miles Turner, was the first guy to own property, own that lake, other than the Dowlings. And that was in 1979, I think it was, when he bought that property. 1990 is when I bought it. Long, long short is this, I ran rave for Art because, guys, you cannot, you cannot put those in there. You see how that lake is? Look at the size of that lake, guys. That's my heaven. I built a home on that. It is 5,400 square feet. Georgia built that house. Log home, beautiful. Any one of you would love to have it. Guys, what they're going to do to me now, I don't know how many, they could tell you what they want to take, they're going to put a housing development in there. That lake cannot take 30, 40, 20 boats, let's say, on any given weekend. Because you see on the, the one end down there, right before they get to Hernando County, I guess, they own that little section of the lake. And so when they sell these properties, it's going to be with lake access, because they're going to put a, a place where you can launch your boat and all that kind of stuff. And it just seems to me that we have to fight for the right to have a nice place. This is not a business adventure for me. This is a business adventure for, for lack of a better term, the Massey properties, to come in there, get it from 10 down to 5, now what's the next time? When Drew, Drew Pittman came in, it was going to move my property line, right? I had hickory trees, gentlemen, it was, we couldn't, two of us couldn't reach that. I'd have to move those trees to get it off his proposal. He wanted me to move all that stuff back and move the trees. That, that lake, Dowling Lake Road, his attorney, oh, Mr. Hobby, I think Mr. Hobby, anyway, I had an attorney also. I am claiming, and have claimed from day one, prescriptive easement on Dowling Lake Road. In other words, when I bought that property, and from 1979, when it was first bought, there was a road all the way back. Drew Pittman comes in, he moves the road over towards us, and takes back another 25 acres, another 25 feet. I claim prescriptive easement. Are you aware of prescriptive easement? I don't know if you are or not. Guys, after so many years, state of Florida says, "It's mine. You haven't objected to me over these years of using that road. Where is that?" I claim that. We had a problem. Mr. Hobby, I think, may not remember Mr. Hobby, but anyway, Mr. Hobby, I think, was involved in this way back when, when it first was sold with the Massey's. But I'm just saying, long, short, don't, don't let these folks come and do this. The road's going to be absolutely horrible, like, like Art said, well, thank you, Art. I'm speaking for the people that live on this lake and say, "Listen."
Time.
Don't take away our, our piece of heaven. Don't let them come in there and put 25 or 30 boats on any given day trashing that lake. It's not right, it's not fair, and I thank you for your time.
Will you go anywhere? What, where, where is your home on that topic?
I'm looking. I live on the, I guess, the north side.
You got the pointer there, Denise?
I can't see it.
Are you at Dowling Lake, sir?
Yes, Dowling Lake Road.
Do I, do I ask you my question?
No, go ahead, sure.
You lose right there.
All right. So, do you have access to your property other than Dowling Lake Road?
No, sir, I do not.
And you, that's how you get to your house?
Yes, Dowling.
Okay, and you, you claim prescriptive rights because you've been driving on it for more than 20 years?
Absolutely.
And have you been paying taxes on that road, too?
I do.
On that part you drive on, you paid the real estate taxes?
I might want to also note, if I may, just a little, I forgot. When I was going through this problem with the prescriptive easement, Drew Pittman and I had a problem, came on to move all this. He may stand there and tell you. He told me one day, out in the middle of that road, because we weren't getting along, and he says, "You know, Mr. Peterson, I'm sorry." And I said, "You know, Mr. Pittman, you've got that part right. You don't think about the people that live on this lake. You're a developer, you're a real estate attorney, you live in Tampa, Florida, beautiful spot. I don't really, that's actually, I used to be a policeman in Tampa. I don't really..."
I don't want to get too far of you. Let's try to stay on the, on the topic. What I want to know is, if that's your only access to your property?
Yes.
And if you think, you think it's illegal access, I don't know if it is or not. I'm not an attorney, but I do know about prescriptive rights.
I can say this, when we were talking, the last thing I'll tell you about that, sir, Mr. Great, he comes to me and says, "Listen, I will allow you to leave your line, your, your fencing where it's at right now, but I want you to cut a little section across at 15 feet, so that people coming down, they'll have to jut over and pick up Dowling Lake again, because he changed the road over." And he says, "I'll sign off on that if, whenever we have a commission meeting, you'll agree to 5 acres." That was Drew Pittman telling me. "I'll sign off and let you have your road, but you've got to give me something, too. I want you to go down there and say, 'It's okay for him to have, change this to 5 acres.'" That's who I'm dealing with. And that's wrong.
So that's not something you agreed to?
Thank you.
So I have a question, too.
Go ahead.
So, your property, how much of it is, how, how big is your property?
All right. In the beginning, in 1979, I don't think it was zoned like that, I really haven't it on, but Dowling sold two parcels. It was a 10-foot, 10-acre parcel that was split between two people. I got one of those parcels, I bought it from the guy originally owned it. I have 5 acres, only like 207 foot of lake.
So, in looking at this area, how, how much of, so you have a 5-acre parcel?
Yes.
How much of it is, of that 5 acres is wet versus how much of it is dry?
I probably have, Mr. Cox, I probably have, and I'm stretching it here, 4 and 1/2, 4 and 1/2 acres of dry land, the rest of it's underwater. I actually own probably 3 fourths across the lake.
Yeah, I see that.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay, but it's, it's less than 5 acres, is you're saying is dry?
No, no. And it too, it's a reason I got 5 acres, the guy beside me, we were only ones, is because originally, 1979, that was allowed to be split between these two guys. Today, it's not zoned that way, it's single on, on 10 acres. But I don't want to see it go to 5, I really don't, for myself and my company. Thank you.
So, I guess I'm not clear, so, I don't know if Mr. Hobby does or doesn't agree about your prescriptive rights, but I guess I'm unclear how that impacts this rezoning. I mean, because I'm, I'm assuming they can build their houses outside of your road, let's just say you do have prescriptive rights. There's nothing in the zoning that says they're going to build the houses to block your access. So if you have prescriptive rights, presumably, they could still build their houses. There may be other houses that use the road, too, but I don't know how that, I'm not sure how they interferes with your prescriptive rights, if we grant this rezoning.
Because when they develop that, they're going to take that 25 feet back. They're going to take my, they're going to take my prescriptive easement back.
Okay, I'm going to have to ask Mr. Hobby if that's true.
Which I claim, and...
So you, so that's, your understanding is that if they build these, they're going to take back your road, your only access to your house?
I'll have Dowling Lake Road. They'll use it, too, of course.
But that, that's what I'm asking you, is if, if other people are also using the road, how does that hurt you? How does that hurt your prescriptive rights?
No, 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 it doesn't. It doesn't hurt my prescriptive rights, because they, I'm saying they, I say the Dowling or Massey properties, through Drew Pittman has allowed me to keep the old Dowling Lake Road in front of my property. And the property, the road now, the way it's situated, the Dowling Lake now, it comes in and it juts over at my property, it juts over to the old Dowling Lake Road, because I wouldn't, my neighbor couldn't get it in his property, it was otherwise, so...
My question is, is us approving, if the board approves this rezoning, does it in any way interfere with your right to get to your property?
I would say so, no, sir.
Okay, that was my question.
I thought that was your argument.
Okay, so, that's why I needed to clarify what he was asking.
Yeah, maybe I wasn't very clear, I apologize for that.
All right, that answers my question.
Okay, anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
May I ask the Planning Commission to move to receive and file the item that Mr. Woodworth showed on the Elmo, please?
Move to receive and file.
Second.
Motion second for the discussion, in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there's no one else, Mr. Hobby, you want to come up and...
No, there's nobody else up there.
Okay, you got to be quick, got to be quick here. Why don't you come up front? If you're going to speak, come up front, so we can get you up here. I'll be bashful.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Calvin Wees, I live at 34053 Spirit Hills Lane. I'm directly to the north of this subject property. I'm also the president of the Property Owners Association for the 20 parcels that are the entire north boundary of this, as well as the Hernando portion that wraps around the Every one of our owners in our subdivision, as well as Greg Keith, who is in the, I would say, northeast corner of that portion, are opposed to this changing to 5 acres. We all purchased in a 10-acre subdivision for the rural nature of it, appreciate and enjoy the open space. Most of the surrounding properties are 10 acres or more. There are a few exceptions, but most of them are more than 10 acres. And I think every one of us would like to see something conforming to the surrounding properties. I know in the community meeting, we saw a breakdown of the parcels, and I think nearly all of the surrounding parcels, except for one or two, are 10 acres or more. So it's, it may be something within 3 or 5 miles, there's examples of smaller parcels, but that entire area, part of the rural, whatever we're trying to, the green space we're trying to keep, is, is all 10 acres or more. So I think I agree with the first gentleman that was up here. I definitely agree that Trilby Road can't handle all that additional traffic. It's already a very tight road, and I don't see how that could be, the improvements of that, all the way to the north, to 98, as well as all the way down to Blanton Road, could be part of this parcel's responsibility. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions?
I just, I mean, I know you're alluding to the size of the tracks there, but I just, there are no dimensions on the map I'm looking at, but I, I can see an awful lot of tracks that are less than 10 acres.
I'm talking about all the surrounding properties that border this parcel. Every one of them that is adjacent to that parcel is 10 acres or more, except for one or two. I think there's 17. There's a couple that are on the old Whittington Lane Road, that's a private road, that used to be part of our subdivision, a way of getting in, that there are two or three, I think, two 5-acre parcels on that road, but they are not adjacent to this subject property.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions? Okay, thanks. Yes, sir, come right on up. Name and address, please.
Charles Easton, 34508 Eastern Lane, Date City, Florida. I've lived there for about 33 years. I am just inside the Hernando line, and Eastern Lane is my deed of easement as access. I don't utilize it, because I also purchased in the Spirit Hills subdivision for the, for the rural nature and to have additional lake access.
So which one are you? Can you point that out?
If you look at the very top of the red box, and to the left is that big green area?
Yeah.
Right there, that's all mine, right there, that green down lower, right there, down lower.
That trap is over there.
Right there, that's all mine, and all the way down to the lake is all mine. Some of the points that Mr. Peterson brought up are correct. Mr. Hobby even led us to believe, insinuated, that they've owned this property for a long time. They didn't own the 40 acres on the lake, that was owned by Andy Lotosa. And they changed the comprehensive plan, which I didn't get a notice of, but apparently, maybe you don't need to notice that particular item when you change the land use. But Mr. Peterson is correct about Lake Dowling. What he didn't let you believe is that's a one-car road currently. I don't know what the right-of-way for the right, the size of the road is, but it is currently a one, no pass road. So I don't see how adding, and the proposal that Mr. Hobby showed us at the community meeting, showed they're going to stack in nine properties, finger-like properties on that lake, in that lower left-hand box on the west side. And that I find troubling, because not only is it directly adjacent to my property, but I wonder how, as Mr. Cox asked, or the other gentleman, I don't have a name tag on, about the size of the lots, if they're going to put nine properties in there, you can see, Lake Dowling runs even with that blue line that intersects the southern section, and they're not going to have any land. Now, their proposed map that they showed us, showed houses in there with a half an acre of actual land. What I would suggest, and I asked the Commission to do this, is to postpone this until they do two things. One, they do a wetlands lake study for the impact on that lake. There are not many lakes in Pasco County that are privately owned and have 10 acres on it. That's a jewel, and all the landowners are protective of that jewel, just like, I'm sure women appreciate their diamond rings. That's our diamond. And the second thing I would say is that, yes, they may have in their wording that they're going to adjust Trilby Road, but I've been a contractor for 30 years, and what that means is they're going to adjust their access and nothing further. They're not going to impact that curve, that double S curve there. That road is 10 feet wide, that's it. Typical DOT road is 12 feet wide. That gives people a lot of room to move around on the road. This road is up and down, sideways, whatever, and 10 feet wide doesn't leave you a lot of room. There's no shoulder whatsoever, none. If you order them to do a traffic study and a wetlands lake impact, I think you'll see that we do, increasing that to 30 to 40 homes will ruin the jewel that we have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, state your name and address.
Sylvia Kelly, 34101, Atlanta Court, Date City. I, we have the lot that's next to Art's on the south side, so our view is totally across, which I agree definitely with this gentleman here. The proposal they put on the section that's red into the lake, they did have the houses, like, there was, he said nine, there's nine, just a little tiny piece of land. Well, all those nine septic tanks are going to fall in there, and our houses, when Art planned our subdivision, our houses are way away. Nobody was allowed to build on that lake. We are up on a hill, way away from the lake. How many acres? Way up, maybe four or five off the lake? So nobody's on the lake. They're going to put nine people on there... So nobody's on the lake, they're gonna put nine people on there in a boat dock? It's a little tiny lake, you can't even ride a ski doo in there. The, I'm, I'm for the land ten acre use, it, it just doesn't need to be changed. You change that, and then you look at the forty acres over here behind our place, well, are they gonna put another twenty houses on that and have that go into the lake? The road is the main situation, we're on that curve. There was a guy killed maybe two or three years ago, right there, because you can't get off the road. The counties let the trees go over, you can't even see. Somebody'd have to redo the road, that's why they said they were gonna make the road compatible, it's not. It's a little tiny road, you can't get by the trucks, semi trucks go up that road, and I think, why aren't they denied? Because they're over the line, and we're all switching off to even get there. So you put eighty more cars on the road there, it's gonna be very dangerous. So, I agree with everybody, what they said, and, um, Mr. Hobbs, or, I'm sorry, I, I don't do well with names, I've had a little problem with names. But he said the plan that they're proposing is not the real plan, that's what he told us at the other meeting. It can be changed, it's just a proposal plan. So let's propose ten acres, the massies make their money, they're still gonna sell it, and we're not gonna have an overcrowded situation, and then the next people with the big lot, over there next to Mr. Peterson's, I believe, now, or the last person that spoke here, his, his acreage up there, then what are you gonna do, make that five-two? So that then there'll be four hundred people on there? Let's keep ten, you promised us ten in the past, let's keep ten. That's all I have to say, you have any questions?
I guess not. All right, anyone else? Mr. Hobbie?
I have a question for staff.
Okay, go ahead, David.
So Denise, I, I recognize you're probably not able to answer this question, but I'm hoping there's somebody in the back that can. The statement in finding twelve that says that the applicant will be responsible for improving Trailby Road to county standards, I'm not sure I understand what that means, and it appears to be relevant to the Planning Commission's decision today, so, how much of Trailby Road, what, what does that mean? I mean, is it?
Well, the, the following statement also says that a substandard road analysis, which will identify the required improvements, will, um, happen at the time a site plan's submitted, so.
Well, I get that, but if it's, if those improvements are substantial enough, maybe cost prohibitive for this applicant, so, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is what, under our normal rules, how much of Trailby Road would they have to improve to county standards, and do they have to straighten out these cur, I mean, that's, it seems to be a very generic statement, and I don't know what it means in reality.
And I'm not certain that there's anyone on staff that can answer that question at this exact moment in time, as I look to the back of the room.
Okay, well, my general understanding is that they have to improve it to wherever the nearest standard road is. I don't know where the nearest standard road is in this area. Like, what?
Land road to ninety-eight.
So how, how far away are those roads? Well, you can't talk from the, I'm asking staff. Thank you.
I can do a measure.
Well, I guess I'll also ask for Mr. Hobbie, what his plan is, because I, I'm not sure what, what they're intending to do on Trailby Road.
Clark, Hobbie, commissioners for the record, I, I guess I'll first address David's issue. To the extent the code requires us to do a substandard road analysis at the time of development, like everyone else, when they do a non-MPUD rezoning, we will do so. So prior to that time, we'll do the substandard road analysis. I think David's aware also that the code allows for, uh, proportionate share mitigation payments made in lieu of us totally redoing the road. I mean, no one's ever been required to redo a collector road that was substandard for miles, so, that will have to be addressed at the time of development, as it always is. I didn't, to be honest with you, I did not see that statement in the findings of fact, and I find it unusual in a Euclidean zoning, so.
The reason I'm concerned is there was just another one we approved earlier, where Denise actually wrote in, had the Planning Commission approve. It said, unless otherwise approved through an alternative standard to allow the payment of proportionate share, they'll have to approve it to county standard. This one doesn't say that, it just says, Trailby Road is considered to be substandard road, the applicant will be responsible for improving.
Right, that, I, I take your point, David, I think it's well, it's well made, I, that was not something that I caught in the findings of fact, and that I think we should address with staff to conform with the way this is handled on every other Euclidean zoning.
So, so basically, your position is you're not gonna improve it to county standard?
We're going, we're gonna follow the code, like everybody else does in every other Euclidean zoning, so at the time.
Okay, but I want to be clear with you.
Right.
Okay, but the code says, my understanding, and I wish somebody was here to address it, but they're not, um, my understanding is that if it's, if you're increasing density, you have to bring it up to county standards. The ability to pay prop share is really when you're not increasing density. Unless we grant an alternative standard to.
Yeah, I mean, but that's historically, David, I mean, all the ones I've been involved in, I've never seen somebody improve a county collector road as part of any Euclidean zoning, I've never seen that. I will work, I will tell you this much, I understand your concern, I will work with you and work with Denise on the language to make sure it conforms to what we do on every other Euclidean zoning that's adjacent to a collector road.
The reason I have some doubts is because we just approved one today, Clark, where we specifically added the phrase, unless otherwise approved through an alternative standard to allow the payment of proportionate share.
No, that's what I'm saying, I, I think.
So that leads me to believe our practice is that you have to approve it to county standard unless we grant an alternative standard. Otherwise, why would Denise insert, insert that clause in the other zoning that we just approved?
I think it's fine, but, but if it, I do wanna, the only thing I would say was I want to make sure it doesn't preclude the other rights that are under the code, so that's why I say I don't have the language in front of me from the other zoning.
If, assuming Planning Commission is okay with that, I think, my opinion, that same clause that we added on the other one needs to be added to twelve, because otherwise, this, it is almost implying that you're gonna improve it to county standard.
And, and again, I did not catch that before today, I, I've never seen that in any other Euclidean zoning on a collector road, so. I, I, for today's purposes, I don't have my client's authority to agree to it, but I am not going to strenuously object if the commission wants to add that wording to the finding of fact.
Well, so, I'm not sure, I want to get into the wording part, my bigger concern is that, that what I'm hearing you say, and I'm not hearing anybody in staff disagreeing, is that it, it's likely that it won't get approved to county standards, that you just may have to make some payment to improve it to county standard.
I'm not sure, David, and the reason why we don't normally deal this at the time of rezoning on a collector road is because we don't know when we're actually gonna develop the site, and it may, the county might have repaved it by that point. And that's why we wait to do it at the time that we're proposing a development.
To my understanding, unlike a lot of collector roads in the urban area, there's, I don't think the county has any plans to widen Trailby Road, so, I'm, it is relevant, Clark, because that is the objection we're hearing, I mean, that is the main issue we're hearing about the rezoning, is the condition of Trailby Road, so I want to understand, what is staff planning to make you do with Trailby? So, I don't know that it's something, I agree that in many cases, we defer this to site plan approval, but that is the main objection we're hearing.
No, I, I, I understand that, but I've never seen any developer, in any circumstance, take on a collector road in this scenario, so. I will, again, this is an issue for right now of coming up with wording, I don't have my client here. Uh, but again, if you want to insert the language that was inserted from the other one earlier, I will work with my client to make sure that that's accepted.
I really want to know what staff's going to do when it comes in, I mean, that's what I really want to know, and there's nobody here to answer the question, so. Don, why don't we have anybody here from Transportation to answer these questions?
David, it's an oversight that we'll correct in the future, we just, uh, we just weren't prepared for it.
Maybe we oughta, maybe we oughta continue this till we have somebody to, maybe that's what we should do.
I mean, this project, just so we're clear on the scale of this, guys, is totally de minimis, and it's beneath the timing and phasing numbers. I haven't looked at it, it may not even generate the number of trips that are required to conduct a substandard road analysis.
And Clark, you may be right, if somebody on our staff put this condition in there, and I, I don't, or this finding in there, and I don't know what they intended by it. Denise, do you have any help?
I'm going to read from the timing and phasing analysis. Trailby Road is recognized as substandard road and needs to be improved to the county standards.
Okay, that's exactly what this finding says, that doesn't help me any.
Where, where it came from, is it came from the timing and phasing analysis? Staff's report on timing and phasing.
Okay, but how much of Trailby do they need to approve? Are they allowed to pay proportionate share instead of bringing it to county standard? That's my question.
I can't imagine that anybody's gonna agree to.
I think you're probably, I think you're probably right, but that's why I'm, that's why I'm concerned that staff is under this assumption. If, if, if staff has recommended approval of this because of the, you assume the applicant was gonna bring it up to county standards, and there's no way that's realistically gonna happen, that's problematic.
Yeah, I, I don't think that that was the assumption.
We'll give them why is finding twelve in there? I mean, that's, okay.
Yeah, well, the effect of it is, is I think we're asking the surrounding property owners to assume that that's what it means.
Well, I mean, and there are times when we say, okay, you don't have to bring up the full county standards, maybe just add some shoulders, or, there's, there's things we do in lieu of a full reconstruction to county standards. But I don't know what staff is willing to allow on this road for this project, and I agree that would be burdensome to make this many units improve all of Trailby Road, I'm not disagreeing with anybody, but I'd like to know what, what are they going to do?
That's why I think, uh, if you don't mind, at the very least, we need to continue with, continue this, so you can have a further.
I mean, Mr. Chairman, I am confident, since this is an issue that's primarily one before we handle, before getting to a development, that this is just a wording of a finding of fact, that we can address between now and the board. I mean, this is.
Well, Clark, I'm not sure I fully agree, because it affects, in my opinion, whether, because that, it does affect whether Planning Commission and the board want to approve this zoning. I think they have a right to know what is going to happen to Trailby Road. If it's nothing, fine, if they, if they want to approve it with nothing happening to Trailby Road, I don't care. If they want to approve it with only any shoulders to Trailby Road, I don't care. But I think they deserve to know what's going to happen to Trailby Road.
Your code says that you don't at the time of this, on a Euclidean zoning, that's my point.
Our code actually says that your access to the property is relevant to a zoning, this, this, this is your main access. So.
So you're, I mean, what you're saying is you want me to conduct a substandard road analysis when the code says I don't have to conduct it?
I'm not saying that you have to do the full analysis now, I want to know when staff put this in there, what were they expecting? Because somebody on our staff thought you were gonna approve it.
And, and in fairness, I mean, I agree with you, I did not see that language, it, we didn't submit it, someone on the Transportation staff wrote it, you know, and my assumption is we're gonna follow the code like every other Euclidean zoning does. And so, you know, again, but, you know, I, I, I don't know what the pleasure of the Planning Commission is, but, I mean, I can address the other issues that were brought up, because some of them, I mean, there's, it's three quarters of a mile from where that S is, till you get to the north boundary of this property. We have a quarter mile of frontage along this collector road. So, it's, you know, there's plenty of ways to make sure that people are safely traveling on a forty-five mile an hour road out there. We're not proposing to cut any of our neighbors off. AGR land use and five acre tracks are the most popular, uh, residential land use in all of northeast Pasco. Forty percent of all northeast Pasco has this size lot and this size land use. And the lots that are nor, you know, north of where we're talking about, a lot of them are five or less. So, if we put aside Mr. Goldstein's issue, I don't think there's anything else that we're not doing that is not consistent with the northeast Pasco rural area, the policies and objectives. We're not required to conduct lake studies, I don't even know what that means, and we're exempt from timing and phasing under nine oh one point twelve dash two, the table, because we generate less than the fifty PM peak hour trips. This, the site's going to literally only have thirty-five five acre tracks on it, that's all this is. So, it's, it's not a large impact, and I would respectfully request, Mr. Chairman, that you move it along, and I will work with staff in the next couple of days to come up with the appropriate language. I didn't write it, I wouldn't have written it that way, because I'm aware of what the code says, that's, I mean, I, I have to follow the code on the substandard road stuff.
I just, I have a feeling that it was written that way on purpose, because they figured that if you didn't do that, you wouldn't develop it.
I, I can't imagine that they were gonna, anybody on our Transportation staff was thinking a person who was gonna have thirty-five units was going to build two miles of roadway. I can't imagine.
Honestly, the biggest concern I have is not the road, it's access to the lake. I, I think it's a, I think it's, I don't see how you're gonna give thirty-five more people access to that lake.
I'm not suggesting that we are, we, we won't be able to, I mean, I could scale it out right here. You have a minimum lot width of two hundred feet in AR five, which is what we're proposing. So, there could be eight or nine people, lots maximum, that's what we showed the neighbors with a very conceptual graphic we had. But most of our lots will be running back where the majority of the acreage is, going back towards Trailby Road. It's simply, it's not feasible, you can't run flag lots, there's a minimum two hundred foot lot width in AR five. If I was doing an MPUD or a conservation subdivision, I could, but I'm not proposing that, it's AR five zoning.
So you're not putting any community docks on the lake or anything like that?
I, we haven't even talked, I mean, this is just a rezoning, we're not proposing anything like that, I can't imagine that Pittman's doing that, right? Yes, sir?
Yes, um, I believe that we have some lack of communication, I think we need more information. I believe, Mr. Hobbie, with all the respect, that at least we need to have, we cannot approve something based in assumptions here. When I say this one, and your concern, Mr. Chairman, is about the lake access. We don't know, we don't have a preliminary site plan to show us how this subdivision would be subdivided, and how those, uh, uh, properties would be attached to the lake. The second, I believe that we need to be consistent with every single project that we approve in the development side, so, the language, if it's missing from staff, from you, we need to read it, we need to see it. So in my opinion, we need to continue this item.
Okay, I, I'll, 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 I'll agree to the continuance, okay? But I, I do want to make this very clear, when we're talking about treating people fairly, the Planning Commission and the board have approved these AR five rezonings time after time after time out here, and you don't have to, you don't have to show a site plan.
No doubt, but it, again, we have citizens that are concerned, we are, we have the right to.
And like I said, I'm fine on the continuance, I just want to make sure I'm not being asked to do something that's above and beyond what you're asked to do.
I, I don't ask, I just suggest.
Okay, all right, fair enough, I understand.
Well, I'd be, so, can I just add to that, so even, I don't, he may be sending, I mean, we have in the past, though, if the applicant wanted to propose a deed restriction, it says that limits the number of lots that would access the lake. That's something that has, the Planning Commission has looked at in the past, I mean, so it's, yes, I don't know that you have to do a site plan, but if you could, if you are saying that you're not gonna have more than X lots accessing the lake, that could be handled through a deed restriction.
I'm saying my client hasn't even gotten that far on the development plan, because it's a re, it's a Euclidean zoning, five acre track zoning.
But in Euclideans, we have, that has happened, I mean, so, I'm, I'm, so.
I'm, I'm, I'm not aware of it, but I mean, I, I take your word, but I take, I take your word for it. But if it's the pleasure of the chairman and the commission, I'll, I'll accept a continuance, we'll work with staff on the transportation side, try to get everybody on the same page, I don't think it's gonna change anything, and to be, I just want to be absolutely clear. The board changed the density on this thing under the comp plan to AGR after the adoption of the two thousand seven comp plan. So, my options are either to do an MPUD with smaller lot sizes with the same number of units. If I want to get to the, what the board approved for this property, do a conservation subdivision to double it, or to do five acre tracks. All I'm trying to do is the five acre tracks, I mean, that's in keeping with the majority of northeast Pasco. So, I'm not sure what else I'm supposed to be doing with the property. So, I'm not sure what else I'm supposed to be doing with the property.
Yeah, I don't personally think five acres is not, is out of keeping with that particular area, but I am concerned about the lake usage.
Okay, well, as I said, I mean, if that's the pleasure of the chairman and the board members, if that's, I mean, I'm not sure it's necessary, but I will defer to it.
I try to put myself in the position of the frequent that live there. And if I was there and I had my acreage and my house in that lake, I'd be concerned about how many people could use it, because it can only accommodate so many people. So, I'd like to know going in.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, so, as I'm looking at this map here, and you start counting the parcels around this map that have access now, and I counted 19. And a lot of these parcels are much bigger on the land side than they are on the lakeside. So, they intentionally gave a lot of parcels access to that lake by narrowing the lots as they got closer to the lake. And the current code says they have to have roughly 200 feet of frontage for the access, then I think they'd be hard pressed to even get nine lots with access to that lake. So, I don't really see that to be an issue. The surrounding area has three acres to 10 acres. That's the standard there. So, five is certainly not unreasonable for this piece of property. This property was used for agricultural purposes. So, now, maybe not during the pine forest, but certainly during the citrus grove times, there's a lot of impact to Trelby Road from trucks from that piece of property. So, I hear the argument that, you know, there's gonna be people living there and they're gonna use Trelby Road, but where's the trade-off? I mean, there's a trade-off where you had heavy trucks on Trelby Road, now you're gonna have vehicular traffic. So, I mean, that has to be taken into account as well. It's consistent with the comp plan, and I don't really see a reason to postpone it. That's my feeling.
All right. Somebody needs to make a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll move to continue.
A second.
And we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Call in favor?
Aye. I'll get with staff on it. Appreciate your time.
And for the record, the continuance is to September 5th, 2019, 1:30 in Dade City. Is that the motion, to continue it to September 15th, 2019? Thank you.
That's what I said.
Waiting a few seconds, and that's okay?
Yeah.
Item PC 7 is PDD 197416 in the name of Edward B. Carlander. This is a rezoning from agricultural residential to MF1 Multiple Family Medium Density District, located in southwest Pasco County on the north side of Darlington Road, opposite Santiago Drive, extending northerly to Sunray Drive, containing 17.15 acres. On this parcel, the applicant has agreed to record a deed restriction, limiting the uses on the property to a total of 81 townhomes. The parcel is surrounded by RMH and R4 to the south, which includes the Darlington Road, I'm sorry, Buena Vista Manor Mobile Home Subdivision and Orangewood Village Residential Subdivision. To the west is a church, the Next Level Church, and then adjacent to that is the Oak Hill Subdivision, which is a high-density residential district subdivision. To the north is Sunray Drive and Pasco-owned property, some of it is submerged land. And to the east is the Holiday Community Fellowship Church. Surrounding land uses are RES 9, potential for nine dwelling units per acre. And the access to the property is from Darlington Road, not being proposed from Sunray. There is a finding that I read into the record, finding number 10, which we kind of talked about in the previous rezoning as well, which states unless an alternative standard is approved for paying a proportionate share cost in lieu of improving Darlington Road to county standards, the applicant will be responsible for improving Darlington Road to county standards. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval. Again, the applicant has voluntarily agreed to record a deed restriction limiting the use to a total of 81 townhome units.
All right, applicant present?
So I have a question. Why would access be on Darlington and not Sunray?
Sunray, and I'll allow the applicant to speak that, Sunray is encumbered by wetlands. This is all a big wetland area.
The wetlands are up there, okay.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
So, the applicant, is the applicant present?
Barbara Willhite, 63, 27, Grand Boulevard, Newport Ritchie, 34652. We are in support of staff's recommendation. Denise just did a great job laying out the facts, the surrounding uses, the land use, the number of units, the deed restriction, and the like. I know there's a neighbor here that has some questions, so let's go ahead and listen to the neighbor. I have my project engineer and transportation engineer here that can probably answer any questions that come up.
Great, thank you, Barbara. All right, thank you. You'll state your name and address, please?
Sure. Good afternoon. My name is Lori Dresser. I am a resident of Flintwood Drive in Holiday, Florida. I am also a Pasco County schoolteacher. And we would like a continuance and more information before the planning board decides yes on this proposal. There are a number of reasons why. First of all, I, when you're looking at the parcel information from the county, there's no FEMA codes here. Why? Probably because Darlington Road floods, Sunray floods, Flintwood Drive floods, and we're not always talking, oh, half an inch. We're talking six or greater inches. You have submerged land. Therefore, do you propose proper drainage so that Flintwood Drive where I live is not going to continue? It used to be the very end of Flintwood Drive. That got flooded. Now, it's a third up the street. It gets worse and worse and worse. So flooding is a great issue. Secondly, we have contacted the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, SWIFTMUD, and the EPA. In that small area is a number of animals, including the gopher tortoise, which is protected. There are owls, there are coyotes, there are deer, there's quite a bit of wildlife, all kinds of birds. The land across the street that is submerged has been the study of more than one environmentalist. They go there voluntarily. They, of course, catalog the birds and the bees, and we have quite a bit of wildlife there. And if you do develop that land-
I'm sorry, what?
Since you're making the statements, do you have information to back that up so we can receive and file?
I have a point of contact. Her name is Alexis Black.
No, I mean, do you have documentation?
You want to see pictures?
No, I want to see documentation that you're, you're making statements. We either have to assume you have the documentation to back it up, or you're just, or you're just making it up. That's what I'm asking.
No, I'm not making it up. And I will tell you-
Where's the documentation?
I just have what I have written here.
Mr. Chairman, the gopher tortoises are listed in the finding of fact.
It's pretty common.
Yeah.
I do have, these are from your website that have no FEMA codes on it. Would you like these?
I see those every day.
Yeah. So-
The county has other sites on there, on, within the county-
I know.
That does tell what the FEMA code is.
Well, when you do-
They're not trying to hide anything.
Yeah, can I please clarify? When a parcel has more than one FEMA code, it typically doesn't come out on the appraisers. So if you look at your finding of fact number three, it says that the subject site is located in flood zones AE, X, and X500. So this parcel has three different FEMA codes, FEMA zones, AE, X, and X500, so.
Thank you. All right, Danielle?
The Darlington Road is of great concern. The reason being that, A, there are no sidewalks on Darlington Road. It is not a very wide street. It has a lot of traffic. We don't understand why it cannot have a Sunray entrance. That's what the whole neighborhood is saying. Why can't they just have an entrance on Sunray? That would be much more reasonable. The mobile homes are sitting approximately eight feet from Darlington Road. They're right on top of it. The second, another point is Holiday has been a bastion for affordable housing. We have, is this going to be affordable housing? And what I mean by affordable housing is, I went to preview other townhomes right down the street across some lows in Tarpon. They're running $331,000 apiece. The majority of the people who live there are not that, cannot make that kind of money. I certainly can't. So are we looking at, constantly, we are constantly getting letters from people trying to buy our houses on Flintwood Drive. They have texted me. They have called me. They have written us. Holiday seem, seem to be the last bastion of affordable housing. And there's a lot more construction going on. Right across the street from US 19, there is a housing boom. And people are concerned about the schools. So, there's quite a bit of going on, and we would just like more information before you just approve this.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Barbara, can I address some of those concerns?
Sure. Barbara Willhite. I will have our project engineer, Jeremy Couch from Tampa Civil, come up and talk to you about the drainage situation. I can note that Natural Resources, if you look at finding, the finding of fact, Natural Resources actually visited the site and made a finding of fact as to what they saw, what their requirement would be. We'll have a requirement for us to do, ourselves to do a listed species survey required by your code. And then after Jeremy Couch, we do have Steve Henry here, and he can talk about Darlington Road.
Okay, you're talking about the access part?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Jeremy Couch with Tampa Civil. Excuse my voice today. I woke up this morning and somehow it disappeared. But 179 through 7, Hunting Bow Circle, Lutz 33558. To address the citizens' concerns, there is a slight issue with flooding on Darlington. The issue is because there's no infrastructure when the surrounding communities were constructed. If you look at the neighborhoods to the south, it's pretty clear you don't see any retention ponds. Essentially, they all just dump to Darlington and then it sits there. As part of our project, we're going to be required to put in infrastructure. We have to dedicate 40 foot of right-of-way from the center line of the road. We will have to build a sidewalk on our frontage. And we've had small conversations with development services staff about possibly connecting that sidewalk all the way out to Sunray. We're going to put in a swale to capture the drainage and take it off the street so that there's no longer a flooding issue. We don't want our new residents to flood, and I think this is gonna help the neighborhood as a whole. The reason we cannot put an access on to Sunray is we have a category one wetland on this portion of the property. The land is low. It does have flood storage. We're not going to be developing anywhere in that area. If we were to bifurcate that wetland with a road, I don't think it would be good for the area. We think that the proper access is off of Darlington. Again, excuse my voice. The property does have three flood zones. We've identified a zone AE with an elevation of 10. Our plan for the project, because we are considerably higher than that elevation, is to pretty much stay out of it. We might have some minor compensating storage that we'll do in the fringe areas of our project. But again, we'll have to meet Section 902 of the LDC. We'll have to get a SWIFTMUD RP. And we'll have to deal with our fair share of Darlington Road. I'm here if you have any other questions. Thank you.
Any questions?
Good afternoon. Steve Henry, Lincoln Associates, 5023, West Laurel, Tampa, 33607. As part of the project, we will be doing a access management analysis to evaluate the access to Darlington. In fact, we've already done the counts and have a preliminary analysis done. Has not been submitted. It will be submitted as part of the construction plans for that. But based on our initial assessment, Darlington Road, there is no capacity issue on Darlington Road. There's plenty of capacity. We've actually run the analysis. Shows that all the movements and the roadway operate at acceptable level of service within your criteria of the code. So we don't see any issue with Darlington from an access standpoint. And as indicated, we will go through the substandard road and evaluate the road as a part of the development process.
So you're gonna have multiple ingress and egress points?
We'll have one access point into the project. This size project, one access would be sufficient to accommodate the project.
All right. Any questions? Roberto, real estate engineer, any questions?
No, I'm okay. Thank you.
All right.
Move for approval.
A second.
Motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion? Call in favor? Aye. Vote. Mr. Garry.
Will you move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Before you adjourn, before you adjourn, quickly, Denise, since yesterday was the first time we had an appeal from the new planning commission, the board. I do think it would be helpful if you told the planning commission when they've been overturned.
Okay.
So I think you should tell them what happened yesterday.
Sure. So at the Board of County Commissioners meeting on Tuesday, is that what you're speaking of, David?
Yes, Tuesday, I'm sorry.
At Tuesday's Board of County Commissioners meeting, the Board of County Commissioners moved to reappoint Charles Gray and Kevin Ryman to the planning commission for two-year reappointment terms that will begin, I'm committing, this is from my memory, and I apologize, August 9th, 2019, and will expire August 10th, 2021. That was approved by the Board of County Commissioners on Tuesday.
Okay, that wasn't, I'm glad you told them that too, but-
Additionally-
Yes, I was referring to the appeal.
Oh, the appeal. I apologize. Okay, well, thank you. So, yes, as you may have recalled, in February, February 21st of 2019, the planning commission denied on a vote, on a 3-2 vote, a special exception for a baseball and softball school, private school, in an agricultural residential district. That item was heard on appeal on Tuesday by the Board of County Commissioners and the Board of County Commissioners overturned staff's, I mean, I apologize, overturned the planning commission's decision and granted the appeal with some modifications to three conditions. They struck out condition four, which required the applicant to improve Hadlock Drive. And also, they struck out condition number 10, which required the applicant to obtain building permits. In addition, they modified condition- In addition, they modified condition number three, which basically extended the hours of operation. Originally, the applicant had requested from 3:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. Monday through Saturday, I believe. And it was changed to 9:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m. So that's what occurred on Tuesday on the Ryan Pryor and Elizabeth Pryor appeal.
So that blows out the water on that one?
They made the residents very happy by eliminating all those conditions.
I just thought you should know what, you should know when you've been overturned, so that's.
Yeah, that's what we're here for.
You know, it would be nice to know, you know, as these things go down the pike and what ultimately is, happens to all these things, I mean, even the ones that we approve and, you know, I mean, they, they may disagree with us and.
Well, I think Denise could probably report back to you the ones where they've gone against your recommendation, either your approval. But for her to have to report back on every single consent item would be a little burdensome. I mean, because.
No, I get that. That I get, that I get.
You've approved 12 items today in consent that they're probably just gonna stay in consent.
Sure, sure, sure.
And so, but.
I wasn't referring to those.
She probably could report back to you on any time the board goes against your recommendation or your decision, so that you're aware of that.
I'll be happy to do that. No, I'll be happy to do that. Do you want that in an actual written report or would you, is it okay for me to verbalize it as I did? What's the pleasure of the planning commission?
Whatever's more to me for you is verbally.
I have a pretty good recall, so.
We don't get that many where you, where the board does something differently than what you did. So there probably wouldn't be more than one every meeting where that happens.
Yes.
If that.
If that.
And another question on the reappointments. Certainly glad that Kevin Tucker reappointed. But what was the process of that?
The process for the reappointment was I spoke to each individual commissioner separately and asked if they had any reservations on the reappointments. And there was a no. In the future, I have been directed for the future reappointments to actually open up the application for the planning commission. So basically state the planning commission is looking for members and have a pool of folks coming in together with the potential future reappointments and get the board's buy-in collectively as to whether they wanna move forward with a reappointment.
So who directed you to do that?
Our county administrator.
So why wasn't that done in this case?
I believe because the reappointment was, it's very, a very short timeframe, I believe. But I, that was, that's just my thinking.
Okay.
So I think we had our motion to adjourn.
Yep.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? On the favor?
Aye.
Thank you.